And that means EAs supporting students with who are vulnerable. That means more counselors.
The Greater Victoria School Board has been ordered to revise its safety plan for schools to include police liaison officers. Why some teachers say increasing police presence in schools is not a long-term solution. And...
It's so special to be a part of the 60th year and getting to do the live orchestra show with everybody.
Marking a milestone, why students at One North Vancouver Dance Studio are putting on a special performance ahead of the holidays. Hello, thanks for joining us. I'm Janelle Hamilton. BC's Education Minister has issued a stern order to the Greater Victoria School Board, submit a revised school safety plan by January 6th, or the board could be replaced. As Shoraya Chethry reports, it follows months of debate sparked by the district's decision to end a program placing police officers in schools.
When we see students, you know, as young as grade five, bringing weapons to school, you know, these are key indicators that we have a safety problem in the school that is not being proactively met.
BC Education Minister Lisa Bear says the safety plan for Greater Victoria School District 61 failed to address key concerns like rising gang activity and a lack of collaboration with law enforcement and community groups. The minister has now appointed a former Abbotsford School District Superintendent as special advisor to help revise it. Bear has made it clear, a safety plan must be ready when students return from their holiday break in January, or the board risks losing control of the district. For months, the school district has come under fire for ending its police liaison program last year, saying that some Indigenous and racialized students felt unsafe with uniformed police in schools. Victoria Police Chief Del Mannick disagrees.
In talking to many, including our Indigenous communities, the Black community, the South Asian community, our Muslim community, we've got overwhelming support locally here.
Mannick says removing officers has left schools ill-equipped to handle violence and gang recruitment.
You know, we regularly have disputes among students and different clashes that we have that sometimes are beyond the capacity for teachers and counselors to deal with. And having that police officer there to provide some advice and some guidance and maybe even early intervention is advantageous.
This parent advocate citing safety concerns has chosen to remove her children from District 61.
There have been issues in my son's middle school and obviously through my advocacy, I've seen and know and and students have been telling me what's been going on in high school.
But one Victoria teacher believes safety in schools isn't always a problem that can be solved by police.
I think the story of vulnerable kids being targeted is not a new story. That was happening when the SLO program was very much in place.
Howe says what the district needs is more provincial funding and resources.
And we've been begging the ministry. We desperately need more people in schools on the ground. And that means EAs supporting students with who are vulnerable. That means more counselors in schools so we can respond when they need us.
In a statement, the school board says it looks forward to working with the special advisor and will report back with an updated safety plan in January. Shoraya Chethry, CBC News, Vancouver.
The International Longshore and Warehouse Union Local 502 says it served a strike notice against SGS Canada, which may affect the delivery of jet fuel to YVR. The union's national president says job action could start as soon as Tuesday morning.
We're looking at, we're looking for the employer to start paying into a DC pension plan, a defined contributions pension plan, and the employer is refusing to do to do so. But what they are saying is that if if the employee pays into it, then we'll pay into it. But how does the employee pay into it when they're making barely enough to survive in the city? And another thing is, is that they don't even have a severance package for these employees either. And the employers refusing to even talk about, talk about that issue.
Ashton says the job action would impact about 11 union members who unload jet fuel from deep sea vessels before transporting it to the airport. He says it's one of the ways planes at YVR are fueled. He says the union has been negotiating with the employer, SGS Canada, since June, and SGS has since walked away from the table. CBC News has reached out to SGS Canada and YVR for comment. The Vancouver School Board has awarded a 99-year lease to a private developer for $8.5 million. It comes a little over two months after the board first moved to hand over 1.6 hectares of surplus land to the Vittori Developments. The land in question makes up the southern portion of the Sir Sanford Fleming Elementary School site in East Vancouver. The VSB says the developer plans to build rental housing with space for retail on the ground floor. The board says the process to dispose of the land was started by the previous school board after a public consultation process. And employers, employees will be given priority to move into the rental housing that's built. But critics say the board's consultation was rushed and limited in nature, and the move to issue the century-long lease is short-sighted.
It's not best for the public. It's not best for children, and it certainly is not best for education. Because when you talk about 8.5 million, that's a drop in the bucket. Really, when you look at that property, it's the equivalent of, again, I didn't measure it, but even if you put four city houses, like regular houses on it, that would even go for more than 8.5 million in today's market.
Ma says the fact that the lease was issued upfront with no opportunity to review it prevents the board from using the land in a way that would better benefit the area's rapidly increasing school-aged population. The school board says the final land use for the site has not yet been determined.
And you know what? We have had so many amazing Saturday nights on this tour, but this is our very last Saturday night on the Eras Tour. And we plan on making it count. I assume that you feel exactly the same way, right?
You heard it from Taylor herself. Tonight is her second-to-last show in Vancouver, with the concert underway at BC Place right now, before she marks the end of an era tomorrow. Our Michelle Gassoube spoke with fans outside the venue earlier today, some who say they're happy to pay the price to see the pop sensation on stage more than once.
We're just hours out from gates opening at the second-to-last stop of Taylor Swift's Eras Tour here in Vancouver. We do have some of that typical Vancouver December rain, but that has not dissuaded people from coming out, taking photos in costume with the sites that have been set up around Vancouver in preparation for this concert. It was also raining last night, but that did not stop fans from gathering outside of these fences and singing along in the rain in full costume, no umbrellas. And we've been speaking to people who, some of them already have been to the concert last night and have more tickets for the concert later this weekend.
So excited that maybe we might stress buy night three tickets. I, we don't know.
Totally worth it. I would do it a thousand times over. I left four kids at home to come here, so yes, it's, it's amazing.
Well, we originally won the Great War and got tickets for Friday night. And then we were one of the lucky ones when they opened up the no-view tickets for the weekend, we got Sunday tickets. So we'll be there tomorrow night, too.
I am running between all of the Taylor Swift signs in the city.
And how long do you think this is going to take you?
Embarrassing to say on camera, but probably about two hours, two and a half, just because you have to stop so many times to get through the city. But it's really fun and it's not actually that cold, so a nice way to get in the mood for the show tomorrow.
And while these three final stops will bring in around 160,000 people into Vancouver's downtown core, 70% of them from out of town. This isn't the only event in town. We also have two sold-out Canucks home games, six Cirque du Soleil concerts, so a huge regrouping of people in downtown Vancouver. So far, everything has been going very smoothly. The city says they're very prepared to welcome all of these people. Tomorrow night will mark the final stop of a world-breaking tour right here in Vancouver. Michelle Gassoube, CBC News, Vancouver.
And with tens of thousands of Swifties flocking to downtown Vancouver tonight for the second show of the weekend, the city, along with Vancouver Police, are advising concert-goers about road closures around BC Place, which include temporary no-go zones for people without tickets. To help people get home, Translink has extended Skytrain and Seabus service hours and has added extra buses to the roads. Those trying to get to the stadium are being encouraged to walk, bike, or take transit, and to plan for significant delays and major congestion congestion in the area. Police have also been ramped up. Vancouver Police say there were no incidents during or after the first show last night. To Vancouver Island now, where Canada Post workers, along with allies, gathered in downtown Nanaimo to call on their employer to get back to the bargaining table. They're among about 55,000 Canadian Union of Postal Worker members who've been on strike since mid-November. It comes as Pure Later and UPS paused shipments from couriers amid delivery backlog.
Canada Post's second offer since mediation stopped was actually worse than the first offer, so now we're going backwards. The big couriers don't go to small communities. Canada Post is the final-mile delivery company that takes everything to all the small communities. So I get that they're hurting and we're sad, we're sorry that that's happening. But unfortunately, it's really Canada Post not wanting to negotiate fairly.
In a statement issued today, Canada Post says it's surprised by the union's public comments on their counterproposal, adding they have made significant moves to close the gap on key issues like weekend delivery, pensions, and wages. Canada Post says they have yet to receive a formal response from the union through the mediators. The Crown Corporation also called out the union for remaining persistent in their demands to represent people outside their bargaining unit, such as making cleaning staff and other contracted support services permanent Canada Post employees. Mounties are asking for the public's help to identify a suspect in a series of sexual assaults which occurred in Coquitlam area. RCMP say they are investigating seven separate reports that an unknown male inappropriately touched the buttocks of women as they were walking. Five incidents occurred between Wednesday and Thursday in the Berquitlam area. Two further incidents occurred on Friday in Glen Park. In all the incidents, the male fled on foot after the assault. Mounties are describing the suspect as a light-skinned man, 20 to 30 years old, 5 feet 7 inches to 6 feet tall, slim to medium build. The suspect was described as wearing a plaid jacket and hoodie underneath with the hood up. Anyone with information is asked to call Coquitlam RCMP. Environment Canada says wintry weather is in store for parts of BC's interior over the weekend. The Weather Agency issued a slate of snowfall, freezing rain, and winter storm warnings this morning. On the Caucahala, forecasters say 15 to 25 centimeters of snow is expected to fall into Sunday afternoon. There were also freezing rain warnings in place for the Okanagan Connector from Merritt to Kelowna and Highway 3 between Hope and Princeton. The warning is also in place for the Similkamene region. According to Dry BC, Highway 1 between Revelstoke and Golden was shut down for several hours today for avalanche control work. The work has since been completed and the eastbound lane has reopened. This weekend, a group of ballet students are coming together to honor a beloved teacher who died of cancer six years ago. As Sorab Sandhu reports, this year's performance is marking a major milestone.
This is actually myself back in, I think, around 2010.
As Seymour Dance Studio in North Vancouver celebrates 60 years, Lauren Overhall, Marisa Haven, and Katie Gillette look back at memories of their time as young ballet dancers.
I started dancing at Seymour when I was three years old and never stopped.
Kira, Riley, Katrina, some of them are still living in the community and some of them are off being lawyers or surgeons.
Now, the trio owns and runs the dance studio that was once owned by their mentor, Sonia Alice, who died of brain cancer in 2018.
Sonia had an incredible group of dancers that loved and supported her. And when she fell ill, we all came together as a team and a family to to carry on her legacy.
They are carrying on that legacy this year with a special ballet performance, the Nutcracker Dream Ball.
Well, it's just so special to be a part of the 60th year and getting to do the live orchestra show with everybody.
So nice to be able to bring different forms of arts together, especially in time for the holiday season, and to give people of the next generation the opportunity to play with a live symphony orchestra and to give our musicians the opportunity to play with wonderful dancers.
The show honors Alice and raises money for a scholarship fund in her name that supports emerging dancers.
The dance school creates a safe space for people to really, and the kids to really be able to express themselves openly and safely. And that creates a bond that doesn't ever go away.
We've built such an amazing community. We have so many lovely littles now joining the studio every year. And I just think Sonia's legacy grows every single year.
Dancers will take the stage for the final performance of the Nutcracker Dream Ball on Monday. Sorab Sandhu, CBC News, North Vancouver.
With three resounding knocks on its doors, the Notre Dame Cathedral welcomed visitors back five years after a devastating fire. More on that story after the break. One of the most beloved and recognizable buildings in the world reopened today. The Notre Dame Cathedral of Paris welcomed visitors five and a half years after fire nearly destroyed it. Leaders from around the world were among those attending. Chris Reyes has the details.
With the thud of his staff, the Archbishop of Paris officially reopened the doors of Notre Dame, bathing its exterior with light and queuing a children's choir waiting inside. In attendance, world leaders and dignitaries. In his first overseas visit since reelection, President-elect Donald Trump was seated next to French President Emmanuel Macron. One seat over, US First Lady Jill Biden and her daughter. Other dignitaries present, Prince William and Ukrainian President Volodymyr Zelensky. Prime Minister Justin Trudeau was invited but had another engagement in Canada. Macron gave the opening speech. "This evening, the bells of Notre Dame are ringing once again," he said. "The biggest applause of the night belonged to those who saved the historic cathedral and eventually brought it back to life. Firefighters and stonemasons, artists and builders, carpenters and architects, and so many others." President Macron praised them and said, "They showed that we had the willingness still to build and to continue the legend over the centuries." Projected onto the cathedral in bright lights, the words "merci" and "thank you" in many languages. After the fire, Macron set the ambitious deadline of restoring the cathedral in five years. It took almost $1 billion and thousands of workers to make it happen. "We have rediscovered what the big nations could do to obtain the possible," he said. "This cathedral was a happy metaphor for what is a nation and what should be the world." The cathedral is now open to the public free of charge, marking a new chapter for the historic landmark whose story began more than 850 years ago. Chris Reyes, CBC News, New York.
Here we have a live shot of BC Place tonight, where we can see a group of Swifties outside the venue singing along and dancing with the pop superstar. It looks like they're not letting the rain dampen their spirits. Will that rain be sticking around? I'll have your full forecast coming up next. All right, it is time now to take a look at our forecast. Let's begin with a quick peek at the current temperatures around the province, beginning in Fort St. John. Snow flurries in a minus five. Similar conditions in Prince George tonight. One degree in Kelowna and zero in Whistler. And five in Victoria and Tofino overnight with that rain clearing up for Fort St. John with a minus three and a mix of sun and clouds for tomorrow. Zero in Prince George. A little more snow and precipitation action in Kelowna for tomorrow with a high of three. Similar conditions in Kamloops. And over on the island, it looks like that rain is going to go away and it's going to be nice and sunny with a high of 10 for tomorrow. And in Metro Vancouver, our five-day forecast, a mix of sun and clouds for our tomorrow at a high of nine. That rain is going to come back on Monday with some scattered showers. Hundreds of volunteers gathered in Surrey today to wrap Christmas gifts and put together food hampers for students in need. It's all part of the annual